You think the mayor would be way another minute, but maybe we could just do a couple of things.
Yeah, I think if everybody reviews the agenda and make sure they're good with it, then we could, when the mayor arrives, tell her we reviewed it and we're good with it. Let me pull up the packet for a second.
Hi, everyone.
Good.
Speech and nobody could hear me. So, good evening. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I said there was one item, oh, I apologize, there was, there is one item that not placing the agenda. And we do have a presenter here, her name is Adrian, she's from Hyattville Police Department, and it's in reference to the grant that we received from High School, Brentwood, and Mount Rainier. So I know you guys had a couple of questions, and we said we were going to bring them in, and I apologize, so it's an oversight not to add them to the agenda. So if we could add them as number eight.
That's fine.
Thank you, Jimmy. Okay, so let me call this meeting to order while she's making, while Melissa is making the changes. So I'd like to call the meeting to order on today, Tuesday, December 7. This is the virtual meeting of the mayor and council, it is 7:07. I'll be calling, bro call, council member Luke Chesek.
Here.
Council member Jimmy Tarlo.
Here.
Council member, O.P. Stoffes.
Here.
And I myself as the mayor are here, we have forum. Vice Mayor Tarlo, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, liberty, and justice for all.
Party and justice for all.
Thank you, Jimmy. So can you guys see the agenda and, and let me know if there's anything else that needs to be added or deleted from this agenda? So that we could make the proper changes in order to, in order to approve it, and while you guys are looking at it, Vice Mayor, can you please read the agenda for tonight?
Quarter agenda, review of the agenda, mayor and council member announcements, closed session summary, public comment, presentation from employee Prince George's workforce, proclamation congratulating Northwestern on winning the boys soccer state championship. We added a presentation from Hyattsville on a grant that was received, a reappointment of all business reappointment to the scholarship committee, adoption of the proposed budget, letter of support for the draft climate change plan, offer discussions, adoption of minutes, charter amendment, mandatory vaccinations, presentation of November 16th work session minutes adjournment, and upcoming events.
Thank you, Jimmy. Brothers affair and read through of the agenda. Council members, anything to add or subtract to the agenda? Hearing that there's no changes to the agenda, can I have a motion to put the agenda with the edited item from High School, from the presentation for High School? Can you guys hear me there?
No, moved.
I barely hear you.
I seconded.
So the agenda has been properly moved and seconded. Is this better?
A little bit, not too much.
I will, I will go back to make sure my computer and my phone.
That's good.
See, is that when I say that, right? Thank you so much. So seeing the agenda has been moved and reviewed, is there any objections? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved. So moving to item number three, mayor and council member event announcements. We start with council member Tarlo, followed by Chesek, followed by Stoffes. Go ahead.
No announcements.
Chesek?
Thank you, Mayor. I was invited to speak at a, an event hosted by a Kansas City Pollinator Group. And it was a wonderful event, about 400 people attended, and they wanted to learn about the Mount Rainier native plant network. And it was, it was really well received. And, and, and so that event is, is helping spur additional interest in what we're doing here in Mount Rainier with the native plant network. We have finished the certification process. There are, I think, 25 to 27 homes that have been certified as being part of the native plant network. A sign that was designed by Tory Partridge is, is going to print soon, and those signs will be in the front of those homes or parks that will be certified as a part of the native plant network. And in the green team is gonna, is gonna organize an event sometime over the winter to sort of show off on the Google map that we're creating, the homes that have decided to really transform their, their yards into more of the native habitat that, that, you know, maybe at once was as opposed to the, having a turf grass. And there are so many benefits for that for the pollinators, for the biodiversity, for the birds and the bugs, and also for stormwater management. At this event that we were at in Kansas City, we had a stormwater expert talk about how, you know, grass, turf grounds and clay grounds almost do nothing for stormwater management. They almost serve as a pan and the water just hits it and, and goes elsewhere. And the deep roots caused by the native plants and grasses and flowers allow the water to get into a ground like ours that is, that is mostly clay. So very important from a stormwater perspective that I didn't really understand the, it's about 400% more effective than grass, and I didn't understand that that was quite the difference in stormwater management having those types of yards. So very interesting to be a part of. The Sierra Club's Maryland chapter, we're meeting every month to discuss how to take this initiative and create a native plant and wildlife corridor across the state. And our next meeting is December 16th at 8:00 PM. If you would like to join us, please shoot me an email, lchesek@mountrainiermd.org, and we can get you involved in helping out with our state efforts. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke, and thank you, council member Tarlo, Jared Stoffes. Council member Stoffes, anything?
Can you hear me?
We could hear you.
Okay, sorry, I'm having some, there we go, okay. I'm having some trouble with Zoom on mic. Since I just did, I want to mention, I got opportunity to go to the Maryland Food Recovery Summit, which was last week. And some really, really neat, I went to some of the sessions on what local localities are doing in different areas, including Ocean City and others. So some really great, really great things and really great feedback on what cities like Mount Rainier can do. So anyways, just wanted to share that, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you so much. So I have a couple of them. Starting with celebrating with our Jewish families. Yesterday was the last day of Hanukkah. And the city actually posted information from day one to now the final day. It's one of the things that we are working very hard to do to make sure we're including the diversity of our residents. So congratulations, celebratory, you know, for, for a well enjoyable, happy Hanukkah to all of our Jewish residents. The other thing is that street, tree maintenance has already started. It started on December 6. The city has posted through the various outlets, so have I, what streets are gonna be taking place pruning, as well as tree removals, and there's quite a bit of them. So please take a look at it. If you have a questions, reach out to Rosio, our interim or acting public works director. So that list is already out there. Pictures with Sana will take place this year on December 18, Saturday, December 18. Please be registered so that we know how many people are coming. We're looking forward to sharing photos, arts and craft. And because of COVID, we're very cautious to make sure it's like a breakfast on the go from, from, from Sana. And the big ticket item, which is like a picture, a socially distant picture with Sana, to make sure you continue keeping those memories. This will be our third one last year because of how big COVID was, we decided not to do it, and this time we have reshaped how to do it to make sure we, we try to keep as many of the procedures in place. The Mount Rainier Citizens Police Review and Advisory Board is accepting new applicants. If you go through our city website, you will find the information if you would like to surf. Mount Rainier Elementary and Tommestone Elementary will be hosting vaccine clinics. They will have first, second dose boosters, as well as vaccine for ages five and up. For Tommestone Elementary is on December 16. For Mount Rainier Elementary is on December 22. Both of them are gonna be host from 3:00 to 8:00 PM. If those days don't work, you can always go to the county website, Prince George's County Sports Learning Center, they have a lot of walk-ins and even same-day appointments if you, if you choose to do that. Tomorrow, we're asking our residents to drive even extra careful. Mount Rainier Elementary School is having their walk or bike to school day. We're definitely encouraging people to walk or bike to their destination safe, you know, as much as they can. But our youth are gonna be, a lot of them walk to school tomorrow morning and at the end of the day, so please be extra careful as you're driving through the, through the city to make sure we keep our youth safe. And last but not least, our holiday basket distribution is gonna be taking place on the 17th of December. So saying that, if you go to the website, you could pre-register. We are gonna be having starting distribution ideally at 3:00, but if somebody needs to come in at 2:00 because 3:00 might be too late, reach us out, we're open to like start a little bit early. The winter clothing and toy drive from Mount Rainier Elementary is going on right now from December 5th to December 15. Please reach out, Ms. Washington. It's jasmine.washington@pgcps.org, and they're taking new or gently used toys, clothing, coats, scarves, blankets, hats, gloves, and sweaters. The city is also having a toy drive, and, and we're collecting items as well for a food distribution to make sure we have everything we need. This Thursday, we are gonna have a food distribution in front of Queenstown's apartment, starting at 9:00 AM. And we wanna send a big congratulations to the Lab Magazine under kickoff event. It is a digital magazine, it is the official publication of the Gateway Media Arts Lab. You will have the information through the Gateway's Art Lab, but also like to see the website if you guys wanna read and get to know our local Gateway artists. And big, December 15, it is the application deadline for the Emergency Rental Assistant Program from the county. The county did had a meeting today, letting us know that they were gonna like close it because they wanna make sure they review the various, various applications that they have received, and there's a big backlog. So we're working through the city, we're working with the city manager as well, and the county as well, to make sure that we are getting, we're figuring out where in the process some of our residents are. But if you're thinking about applying, please apply before December 15, before 3:00 PM. That's when, last moment, they will take the applications. So that's a little bit of, a little bit of things we're doing, and anything else, please go to the city social media accounts or sign up to e-notifications to make sure you are on the know when it comes to events in the city. So that was, that, that's overall it. So next item on the agenda, closed session summary. Vice Mayor Tarlo, can you please read the closed, closed session summaries for us?
Can you increase the font or open up a little bit? My eyes on this clip. Okay. Closed session summary was started on October 16th, 9:50. It was a virtual, was under annotated code. Subsection one to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, a performance evaluation of appointees, employees, officials of whom this public body has jurisdiction. Any other personal matters that affects one of our specific individuals. The move was voted to go into closed session. I moved, Jimmy Tarlo moved it, seconded by Luke Chesek. It was unanimous, 4-0. The elected officials in tents were the mayor, Luke Chesek, Jared Stoffes, Jimmy Tarlo. Topics discussed was the job responsibilities of the city manager. There weren't any relevant notes. We moved to actually recess the closed session until the following Monday at 6:00 PM. That motion was moved by Luke Chesek, seconded by Jared Stoffes. It was unanimous. We recessed at 11:33 PM. We came out of, came back out of recess at 6:04 PM on November 22. The city managers joined us. There were no votes were taken. We moved to adjourn at 6:16 PM, 16-minute meeting. Motion moved by Luke Chesek, seconded by Jared, unanimous vote to adjourn closed session. And no actions were taken. I'm not sure if that says or nothing or not.
It's 12 minutes.
Okay.
It's like, it was the whole 12 minutes because we started at 6:04.
12 minutes.
Thank you, Jimmy. So that is the summary of our closed session, and it looks like two different days because we recessed and we came back to do the till end of it. Okay, thank you for that. We're gonna move on to item number five, public comment. You know, this will be the time when the public will comment and things that are now on the agenda, ideally. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have something to add, please state your full name, as well as the block that you live in. So example, 3700 block of 37th Street, Selena Benitez. Okay, so right now I'm gonna ask, if you need to speak, please go ahead, and if you're in the chat, please add yourself to the chat. Let us know you're speaking. If you're on Facebook, please, we can always read your comments. So Melissa or Jared, anything on the chat? All right, so no public comment. Okay. Moving on to presentation from employee Prince George's workforce. This is a 20-minute presentation, and let me hear. We do have members of Prince, of Prince. We do have members of uh, Prince uh, Prince um, Employee Prince George's County. I see Portia here. Correct, who else is here from employee, uh, employee? Oh my God, I can't even pronounce. Employee Prince George's.
Good evening, Mayor Benitez. Yep, good evening, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Benitez, Alexander Austin, Director of Business Services with Employee Prince George's.
Thank you so much for joining us. We're gonna open the floor. We've asked them, we asked um, Employee Prince George's uh, workforce to join us to let us know what programs they have um, for residents, for our business. And in order to um, to keep up in form, because there's a lot of greater, great resources. So I'm gonna open up the floor to you guys. It's about ten minutes to present and then we'll open it up to Mayor Council and if any other resident um, has them. So thank you for being here.
Hey, well, good, good evening. This is Walter Simmons. I serve as the President and CEO of Employee Prince George's. Uh, so thank you for the invitation. Uh, and what I will do is just provide a quick overview. And I, and it'll be a lot of information, uh, but it'll allow you all. Uh, and I can send this presentation over to answer any questions.
Walter, could I ask you to speak up a little bit louder? It's a little hard to hear you.
Sure, so uh, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
A little bit, thank you.
Uh, Employee Prince George's is a five oh one C three nonprofit, designated, designated as the principal workforce development entity for the Prince George's County Government. Uh, we serve as the administrative agent of the Workforce Development Board, which is appointed by the county executive, the fiscal agent of the Workforce Development Board, the workforce development service provider for adult and youth job seekers, as well as the operator of the Prince George's County Public Workforce System. Of course, one of our tasks is providing data on the status of the county uh, related to labor market. Uh, and one of the things I wanna highlight here is the comparison of where we were uh, pre-COVID, where we are today and what is the impact. Uh, from the four key economic indicators for workforce development is unemployment rate, unemployment, employment and labor force. February, the month prior to our shutdown uh, and mandatory closures in March of last year, we had a three point five percent unemployment rate, little, oh, close to eighteen thousand unemployed people, five hundred and three thousand uh, jobs, people employed. That's the jobs number you hear. And five hundred and twenty-one thousand workers in the county. That's unemployed and employed. In October, uh, keep in mind in July or August of twenty-twenty is when we saw the largest unemployment rate in Prince George's County history at ten point nine percent. By October, it started going down at eight, eighty-eight percent, eight point eight percent. Forty-four thousand unemployed, which you see more than doubled from the almost eighteen thousand. Four hundred and fifty-four thousand employment. So we lost uh, about forty seven, forty-eight thousand jobs. And our labor force dwindled. We lost uh, twenty-three thousand people out of our workforce. Uh, today, uh, the most recent numbers, we have a six point four percent unemployment rate, uh, which is down from the eight point eight, but still much higher than the three point five percent. Our unemployment is down to thirty-one thousand. Employment is at four hundred and sixty-one thousand. So we're still about uh, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand. Uh, less jobs than pre-pandemic. And our labor force is still down uh, close to twenty, uh, probably about twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand. Uh, so that's the impact of COVID. What is the long-term look back in the projection? Is that we have the, our indicators at, they are the equivalent they were in November of two thousand thirteen. So uh, from a perspective of looking at over a seventeen-month period, uh, we lost uh, about seven years, seven, eight years in economic growth in the workforce development world. Now that we're now at the equivalent of where we were in November of two thousand thirteen. So what are we doing to lead this county forward? Uh, one, we have the largest workforce system in the country from a partnership. Prince George's County American Job Center Community Network is the brand of our workforce system. If you want more information and detail, you can go to pgcajc dot com. We have uh, the network is a tiered system of community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, libraries, government agencies, service providers and educational institutions that are all centered around our three career centers, American Job Center Largo, our youth career center, which is the only career center in the region dedicated to out-of-school unemployed eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, which Prince George's County normally ranks number one or number two in the state. And then our newest job center, American Job Center National Harbor. And in March of two thousand twenty-two, we'll be at a mobile American Job Center. So we definitely wanna stay in contact uh, with you all. Let us know your events, your community events, so that we can make sure we can bring jobs and resources on-site at those events. We operate fourteen different programs. Uh, an encore program for job seekers who are fifty-five and older. Career pathways for all, which is for immigrants, refugees, assailies, English language learners, and those who are residing in those households, like your first-generation U.S. citizens. Veterans Career Connection, which is for our veterans and transitioning service members. Pathways to Success, which is for the justice involved. That means returning citizens, those who are currently in court, those who are, might be probation and parole, and those who have been released uh, from the correction, from a correctional facility from the long term, but are still experiencing barriers to employment related to their criminal record. Our COVID-nineteen Workforce Development Recovery Program, which is for those impact, negatively impacted by COVID-nineteen. Key element here is our Rapid Reemployment Grant. I believe this is the biggest partnership opportunity uh, that the mayor and I talked about for us to partner with you all. We are providing grants to businesses that hire unemployed Prince George's County residents. And this could be an employee that they previously laid off, that they wanna bring back. These grants will cover fifty to seventy-five percent of that, of that new hire salary for the first twelve weeks with a maximum of fifteen thousand dollars per person. So that means if an employer want, had, wanted to hire, one of your businesses hired ten people, they could get up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support th- those workers. The goal is that we know that revenues have been strained over the last seventeen months. We know that employer might wanna bring back two people or might wanna bring back four people, but they can only afford to bring back two people. We are hoping that these grants increase the rate that they will bring back employees so we can increase the amount of jobs. And we're providing grants to do so. We have five million dollars that we wanna allocate to businesses this year. And we wanna work with our municipalities to host events, connect with businesses. Uh, we can come on-site to let us know what we need to do to get support to your businesses and get your unemployed job seekers back to work. Uh, through that program, we're able to award five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to twenty-nine businesses, helping eighty people get employed. We did that in about sixty days. So this year, our goal is to give away five million dollars. We opened the applications uh, in October. We have two youth programs, Keys, which is for out-of-school youth who are unemployed, and then Youth Career Connections, which is for juniors and seniors who are not on track for college or military. And then we have our Industry Bridge Programs, our construction program, we're construction and real estate. We have an epic, the Educational Partnership for IT Careers, which is for IT and cyber, healthcare, Capital Area Healthcare Alliance, and Hospitality Accommodation Institute, which is hospitality, customer service, food and beverage, tourism, entertainment, and our Professional Services Institute. What's not pictured here is our newest program, which is the Transportation and Logistics Consortium, which is gonna officially launch this month, focusing on transportation, logistics, warehouse, warehousing and distribution jobs. Couple of things to keep up is skill up Prince George's. We have our own electronic learning management system that is free to all Prince George's County residents. Uh, over five thousand free courses. We have our Virtual Career Center, which offers a number of services that our American Job Centers offer virtually. And we have our Virtual Training Portal. We will provide tuition assistance, one hundred percent tuition assistance for occupational skills training courses, non-degree-granted courses at recognized training providers. Uh, and so we're soliciting, if you have any training providers in the city that uh, that, that, that wanna get on the list and wanna provide tuition assistance, or you have residents that are looking to increase their skills, we can support them. Uh, so I'll take time for your questions. Uh, but thank you for the opportunity. Again, uh, Director Alexander Austin is, is on the call. Uh, he leads our Business Services Department, uh, which is providing direct services to businesses. Portia Hurt, our Director of Policy and Compliance, is also on the call that can serve as your liaison to Employee Prince George's for all of our elected officials and municipalities. So Portia will be your central point of contact. If you have a question, you have a need, you have an event, let us know. Portia will be that contact to work with you. And Alex will be the contact to work with any of the businesses to provide customized support as we wanna develop this partnership. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Walter. I actually met Walter at um, an event. The Poderos de Mujer, right? Who um, where he was recognized for his great work when it comes to outreach to the community. And I, and I told him, I was like, I want you to come to our meeting. And I think I wasn't gonna follow through, but I was like, I don't joke with following through. I make it happen. So uh, thank you also, Mr. Hopkins, for connecting us. Um, I definitely appreciate um, the follow-through and making sure uh, they were here for this meeting. Um, so Council, I will open up the floor to you. As well as you can see, they provide a lot of great services. I think most people don't know, especially um, through these hard times, it's good to know that they, you know, both businesses and people could get um, a lot of services. Uh, Jared Stoffes, council member, the floor is yours.
Yep, um, thanks. No, I just wanted to thank you for coming in and taking the time, taking the time on a Tuesday uh, to run through this with us. And uh, no questions. I, a lot of this was actually new, uh, new to me. It's really helpful to know what the resources the county has um, to support our residents and workers. So just thank you again. Um, definitely be doing some uh, more uh, more digging and learning. Um, and thanks again. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much. Jimmy?
Uh, just thank you for coming and appreciate all the work you do. And we'll hopefully our staff will try and figure out some ways where we can use your uh, resources for us. Thank you.
Perfect, uh, Luke?
Yeah, thank you so much for coming on by. Um, I hope you build a good relationship with our Director of Economic Development, Ron Hopkins, and make sure you and Ron can get in touch with every business and, and make sure they understand um, what's available to them. Um, appreciate that and uh, just thank you for coming on by.
Thank you, uh, Luke. Um, so Employee Prince George's County, I'm gonna open up the floor in case we have any question. Um, Melissa or Jared, can you let me know if there's anybody in the chat that would like to say something? No. So um, Walter, you will be providing the slides to us as well, so we could put them on our site and links to connect to um, Employee Prince George's, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Because I think that not only is this like, you know, a lot of us are absorbing everything that you just shown and we look forward to collaborating, um, you know, continue to collaborate because I knew you have a good relationship also with Mr. Hopkins. Um, so um, thank you so much to the whole entire team for coming tonight. We will be reaching out to you guys uh, when it comes to the workshop. And please keep us posted. We're very um, happy to share your information so that we keep our, our residents employed, both uh, through our MRTV and also our city um, our city website. So please utilize us as that resource because I, ultimately what we want is to make sure we get our staff employed, our business running, and people trained in the various fields that they're out there. So thank you so much.
Thank you. You all have a great evening.
Good night. Thank you. Uh, moving on to the next item. Uh, we do have a proclamation um, for um, the very uh, proudful um, soccer team. Um, if you guys are not aware, on November uh, twentieth, uh, the Northwestern Wildcats, um, class four A, uh, you see a picture of them right there. Um, won uh, the state championship. Um, and it had been twenty-six years since they had been won. So as they broke various records and made history on their own. Um, we do have their coach here. Uh, Coach Victor Ramirez, who's also um, who, who's also a Wildcat and a Mount Rainier, a proud um, resident. Uh, as well as he grew up in Mount Rainier, some of you guys do not know, former senator. And like, you know, I always tell them, like, once you serve, once you serve in any political capacity, you're there, that you're there for life. So, thank you, Victor, for joining us. I'm gonna read the proclamation. Um, we are working on collaborating with Victor on doing something uh, for the youth, uh, whether it's the parade or joining them in their event. So this is like an initial proclamation, but um, more to be coming. And we are gonna be awarding uh, signed proclamations to the whole entire team when we see them and, and all the certificates. Because of, we're having a virtual meeting, we'll do it like right now this way, but we will have like something bigger later. So I'll read you guys the proclamation at this point. It says, uh, proclamation congratulating the class for a boys' twenty-twenty-one soccer state champions, Northwestern High School. Whereas on November twenty-twenty-one, the Northwestern High School Soccer Team won the four A boys' twenty-twenty uh, one soccer state championship, bringing pride to Prince George's County. And whereas the city of Mount Rainier celebrates and congratulates Northwestern High School State Champion Soccer Players, Coaches, Managers, Parents, Administration, Athletic Department for their sportsmanship efforts and leadership. And whereas the twenty-twenty-one class four A state champion, Boys Soccer Team members, Jason Lopez, Alex Campos, Samuel Reyes, Jose Flores, Jalen Mahano, Diego Sosa, Nathan Poba, Josue Guzman, David Viatoro, Jefferson Estrada, Josué de la Paz Mejía, Luis Sanchez, Marvin Arias, Ronald, Ronald Cardona, Luis Romero, Edenilso Acevedo, Jonathan Argueta Hernández, Messi Iglesias, Diego Arévalom, Brian Campos, Julio González, Mauricio Campos, David Posada, Adrian Tejada, Alexis Romero, and Alessi Sosa, brought pride to my uh, Prince George's County. Whereas the city of Mount Rainier recognizes that great effort, mentorship and dedication made by head coach Victor Ramirez, assistant coach Jose Jovell, uh, Jordan Estumus, uh, Diony Valladés, the managers, Caesar Chicas, Daniel Escalante, Kevin Alvarado, the athletic director, uh, Terry Denti, and the principal Dr. E. Carleen Murray. And whereas the North, Northwestern Soccer Team makes history, as it has been twenty-six years since the last one state soccer championship. Whereas the city of Mount Rainier extends an invitation to the Northwestern High School Soccer Team, the class for A boys' twenty-twenty-one soccer state championships, parent, coaches, administration to join us for the Mount Rainier Day Parade twenty-twenty-two. A signed copy of the proclamation be given to each of the team members, coaches, managers, assistant directors and principal. Now therefore, um, I, Selena, Mayor Selena Benitez and the city of Mount Rainier Council do hereby congratulate the twenty-twenty-one state championship class four A B Northwestern Soccer Team parents, um, soccer team, parents and coaches. Um, and we call on our Mount Rainier residents to join on congratulating, and congratulations, um, Go Wildcats! And it's signed by me. So um, Coach, I will be opening up the floor um, to you. Congratulations on this um, outstanding um, accomplishment for, for your team. I know you've been coaching for quite a bit, um, um, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I apologize, I, like many of us, for flu season. Um, but I wanna thank each and every one of you, the council, mayor, uh, Mount Rainier residents. Um, it's, it's a privilege to, to go through this process with such a great team, our boys are our future leaders. And I really believe that, you know, the adversary, adversity, the, the challenges that we, they face, um, as, you know, getting through COVID, they didn't play last year. And we had, we had a lot of good players that graduated last year. We had a lot of good players this year. But I think that the way they came together um, this year, we started in the summertime. You never know where you end up in November. And this year, they just were resilient. Uh, they never gave up. We played against uh, uh, teams that were very good. And I, I, I like to say that every one of our playoff games, we were always down one-zero at halftime. And they always, they don't, we're a second-half team. They always turned it on in the second half. And uh, they, but they never lost sight of, uh, they were, they were, they were always, I think, in control at ti- and I think, in control at time, and, and even when we were like nervous, they were never nervous. But I always tell them, if you put this much effort and this much dedication into what you did this soccer season, you will be successful in whatever you choose to, to do in life, um, beyond soccer. And whether that's owning your own business, uh, doing whatever you want to do, going to college, et cetera. And I think that for me, I always wish that, I always tell them, thank you so much for allowing me to share in this journey. They're a great bunch of student athletes. And I just wish them the best. And quite honestly, it's, it is very, very tough to win a state championship. And as you can imagine, it's been the first time in twenty-six years for Northwestern High School. And I'm just so proud of them and I, you know, and these are memories that will last a lifetime. I really believe that. And, and some of them are M- Mount Rainier residents. All of them either live in Mount Rainier High School or Brentwood, which is, you know, to me, it's, it's, it's great because they all know each other. Many of them know each other from elementary school, believe it or not. And they've all grown up together to share this and to, and I know they're very proud to be representing Prince George's County Northwestern in the neighborhood that they live in. And so I think it was just very proud moment as a coach and a very proud moment as a Northwestern Wildcat myself.
Thank you, Victor. I'll go ahead and open the floor to the council. And there is uh, works of doing something else aside from the proclamation. Um, so um, we'll be inviting uh, the whole community to um, you know, to witness and join. Um, we decided to do it this way as a one step, and then we'll continue moving on. But uh, Jimmy Tarlo?
Uh, thank you and uh, congratulations, Victor. And I'm actually just so personally proud of you. And uh, you know, a lot of us get involved in sports because our kids are, are involved in sports. But uh, your children haven't reached that age yet. And I know when you first got involved coaching, I think you were about to run for state's attorney. And I told you, you were crazy, uh, because this, how much time is it gonna take? But you were really uh, dedicated to this. And you spend your afternoons uh, after work and before door knocking, uh, going to practices. And uh, I'm just very happy for you. And I just want to know why you don't smile. I mean, you look so serious. Like you're about to get somebody in trouble. But you know, I think we're all very proud of you and very proud of the kids uh, at Northwestern. It's great. I don't know if everybody doesn't know, but Victor himself was a soccer star both at Northwestern and then at Frostburg State College uh, uh, back in the day.
And sometimes.
We're all very proud of you, Victor, and we're very happy.
Thank you.
And for the kids.
Thank you, Jimmy. I know you're like putting uh, Victor's age out there. He's like two years old, leaving high school right now. No. With all the knowledge of like, somebody that's much wiser. Uh, we're gonna go with uh, Luke Chesek?
Way to go, Victor. Um, now you just gotta go out and defend, baby. You just gotta defend that title, bring it back. You can't let anyone take it from you now. So the hard work just gets started. Now you got, now you got expectation you gotta manage. So it'll be a good, another good lesson for the kids on how to manage expectation. And uh, but super cool um, that you were able to do this. I know how hard it is. I coached AAU ball and basketball in PG County. So it's hard to, to, to win a state title. That is a hard, hard thing to do. Um, and to keep a bunch of eighteen-year-olds, seventeen-year-olds, sixteen-year-old kids focused on one goal. I mean, that's important. And uh, um, you know, just in, in the, in the workplace, I've had a lot of good managers who, you know, they hire athletes because they know athletes know how to work as a team and come together for victory. And you're training kids for um, just becoming really good citizens and, you know, employees and managers and volunteers and whatever else. Uh, great work. So appreciate you. Way to go. Go out and defend.
Thank you so much, uh, council member. It's uh, I, I, I don't even want to think about that for a few months.
No pressure, right, Victor? None whatsoever. Bring it back.
You're gonna be getting a star to stay for another year.
I, I figure Victor's gonna have to stay being a coach for Northwestern until his kids are old enough to get to Northwestern. So you have a couple of years to go. Council member Stoffes, uh, the mic is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Victor, thanks for being here tonight. Um, congratulations. I mean, this is, it's, it's really amazing. Um, you know, thanks for your past leadership in the county, but thanks for your leadership with um, with youth and with kids like this. I, I, you know, you're, you wear, you wear a ton of hats. And I mean, you know, in addition to everything else, as Jimmy mentioned, uh, you know, coaching and keeping a bunch of uh, you know, teenagers um, motivated and engaged and growing is, is, is no small task, probably, probably one of, one of the biggest ones you've had. So I, you know, I just wanted to thank you for your leadership, uh, as like this. Um, you know, I, I've uh, unlike Luke, I've, I have never coached. I've never been a star or anything. Um, and I, I never uh, you know, never, never ended up being um, well, a sports star or anything. But you know what? I, I did remember growing up, I did play some sports. I was never, I was never that good, but I remembered like the impacts that great coaches had on me. And it was not just in like, you know, building my um, you know, my, my interest and my confidence, but it was like growing me as a person. And I, I can only imagine, you know, someone with your breadth of experience, your skills, your, you know, your kind personality and your positivity, the impact that you're having um, on all, in all these youth and, you know, both in what's before them right now and where they're going in the future. So I thank you again for your dedication, um, you know, to this area and the county and um, uh, our youth of tomorrow. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, council member, um, for your kind words. I honestly, I, I think I learned more from them than they sometimes learn from me. I really, I had learned so much beyond the soccer field, but what they're, what's going on in our community and in our schools. And I think it's very, uh, you know, I, I just appreciate their feedback and their honesty. As, as we know, um, children are, are very honest. Um, and, and so for, for me to just watch them grow, because some of them I've known for four years. Um, and so, you know, they're now eighteen years old. They used to be fourteen. And it's incredible uh, how much they're, they have grown uh, not just physically, but mentally. And I, I can't wait to see what many of them, all of them are gonna do. And they're, they're gonna do a great job in their lives. And I, I truly believe that.
So, thank you, Victor. You know, we're beyond proud of uh, you, not because you're like, you were um, not only a Salvadorian, I would like to put that out there. Uh, but also um, you know, you're a child who was, you know, here in Mount Rainier. So you have brought a lot of pride and joy to the city. Um, not just as the coach, but personal goals. But I think the beauty of this is the fact that you're passing on your mentorship and guidance also to the youth, you know? They not only could see somebody that is like um, you know, very efficient when it comes to sports, but also legislative, um, but also community service. And I think that's what our youth need to see. Uh, role models that they could identify. So they cannot sit there and tell you, well, I live in Mount Rainier, I don't know where I could go, right? You have showed them that um, you definitely have put very heavy foot in the ground and showing um, this is what you can accomplish and so much more. So you lead by example, and that's something I definitely appreciate about you. And I look forward to um, meeting the kids. And I guess we're gonna have to like, work on that parade that, you know, planning um, uh, that we have on. But please extend the invitation. I'll be able to like, you know, uh, get the proclamation signed and ready for them. And at the same time, uh, the invitation is open for them, for them to also join us uh, in a side, aside from uh, uh, another parade. But on the Mount Rainier Parade and Day, as, as our guests, you know, because it's important for them to be celebrated. I think a lot of time when you think youth, you think trouble, but you also need to celebrate those youth that are, you know, excelling in our community and making not just the city or the county, but the whole entire state proud because of the efforts on and off the field. So um, thank you so much, Victor.
Very much, Mayor. And uh, thank everyone, thank you for your very kind words. It's, we have a lot of great kids in Prince George's County, in our community, in our neighbor, neighborhoods. And this is one, one example of a, a great set of student athletes. Um, but thank you very much. And I will certainly let them know that the city of Mount Rainier is behind them. And it, and they are, the city of Mount Rainier is very proud of them as well. And I'm sure when, when the weather gets a little warmer, or in the spring, when you have your parade up, certainly would like to bring them out so that um, you know, they can see, you know, that, that there, there are people behind them and their people are proud of them. And I think that, that would give them um, you know, something to, to cherish and um, and to enjoy their accomplishment as well. So thank you so much. And we're gonna, there's not, yeah. Thank you again for the city to, to host this tonight. I wish they were, they were here. As you can imagine, uh, I'm hoping that they're doing their homework. You know, they're at home keeping warm right now, and, and they are. And so, well, thank you. I look forward to, to having them meet each and every one of you at, at a certain time in the future.
Thank you so much and have a good night. I was gonna say, don't travel too far.
Oh, well, thank you so much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. I like good, good feeling uh, success stories. I think that especially, you know, through COVID and our very busy days, it's always good to hear wonderful news. So that's definitely like something uh, that is great. Um, so now we are moving on to presentation for Hyattsville Police Department. Uh, we do have Adrian here, she'll explain to you guys what the grant is, what the partnership um, is between Hyattsville, Brentwood and Mount Rainier. And um, and we look forward to your presentation, Adrian. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Benitez, and good evening, council. Thank you for having me. Um, I did not come prepared with a slide to share, but I would, um, I'm very excited to give you all of the details that we have at this point, um, with more exciting news. Hyattsville Police Department in partnership with Mount Rainier PD and Brentwood PD has received a two hundred thirty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. Uh, this is under a joint CIT mobile crisis proposal. Uh, many of you are probably familiar with the term CIT. That's um, Crisis Intervention Team Training for Law Enforcement Officers. And it is an international form of training that provides forty hours of in-depth, in-depth um, education and training for first responders so that they can be best uh, prepared to engage people who are experiencing a behavioral health crisis. Now, the training in and of itself does not cost anything for our officers in this area, but what the grant is going to fund is the addition of licensed behavioral health clinicians who can meet our officers at the scene of the most extreme behavioral health crisis calls. Now, if you do the math, over two years, two hundred thirty thousand dollars um, does not break down to a lot of money, but it is a huge start for us. It will provide funding for, depending on how we determine um, the break, breakdown should fall, somewhere along the lines of one full-time and one part-time behavioral health clinician. This will not give us twenty-four seven coverage, but again, this is a huge start. And these individuals will be dedicated to just meeting our officers in the three municipalities at the scenes of um, crisis calls where our CIT officers have already responded, but they need that additional um, that additional assistance. We have about a six-month runway period during which we'll be able to um, examine exactly what times of day we think we'll need to have people uh, scheduled to cover the most cases. Um, the, the grant, this particular grant is designed to work in a sort of a cohort so that we as a recipient of the grant will be kind of moving along in tandem with the other agencies across the country that also received funding under this particular grant. And so there will be some handholding to a degree from um, the cops office, which I am, I think is great. Um, as the media relations and mental health programs manager, mental health programs manager being the more important part um, in this, in this capacity, um, I will be the person who's overseeing the program. Uh, but, but being able to work with individuals um, through the DOJ who can help us along um, is an added benefit. Um, this all came about um, after having met Chief Althoff in Brentwood and um, understanding that uh, Hyattsville PD already has a relationship with Mount Rainier PD and that we share dispatchers. And so it was recommended that I reach out to Chief Alston. And he has been uh, fantastic. Uh, Mayor Benitez has responded very quickly when I reached out last summer and said, listen, we have this opportunity to submit this application. It is looking for partnerships in the area. Um, it seemed to make a lot of sense that in our, our um, Route, Route One corridor area that this would be a way to pilot something, um, starting off small, but that can support our smaller municipalities where, um, although the county does have a mobile crisis response uh, program in place, it is um, at the most staffed with, I believe, two teams to cover the entire county. And so what this grant through the DOJ cops office will allow us to do is have individuals who are dedicated to meeting our officers at the scene. Um, this is not a formal co-responder CIT model, which is the standard, having a CIT certified officer respond with a practitioner. Um, because of our municipality sizes, we don't have the staffing to be able to specifically dedicate our patrol officers just to respond to behavioral health crisis calls. But this is a way through the design of having practitioners meeting them on the scene. Um, we can still have the, the expert um, with the, with the um, the, the specific skillset be able to assist our uh, officers who have that extra tr- training to really provide our, our residents the best support that we can uh, possibly get them at this point in time. Uh, I know I just threw a lot at you. I am um, very happy to, to take questions.
Thank you so much. I was muted. Uh, thank you so much. Um, I'm gonna open up the floor uh, to Jimmy, uh, Jared and Luke, council members. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. It's very exciting. Uh, two things. One is, I know there's ARPA funding uh, eligible for this kind of work. Uh, have you tried to maybe uh, talk about having a, a joint uh, proposal which would kind of supplement and add on? So it might be more like twenty-four seven. Uh, and you know, about getting the three municipalities involved in um, making a proposal to kind of increase the work? Cause anyway.
So I am, I'm absolutely um, hoping that we will be able to find additional funding to build out this project. Um, there is the benefit of having three municipalities, smaller municipalities working together under one umbrella. Um, the catch is that I am, I'm a uh, department of one. And so just getting started, um, I'm hoping that we can just lay the groundwork and kind of weight our toes in to make sure that we have the foundation set up properly before adding um, additional funds. We are still, um, I am, I'm still looking for avenues for us to procure a vehicle. The grant would not cover vehicles. And so we do need someone, we do need a vehicle that our practitioners can use to get to and from the scene and possibly transport individuals. Um, these would obviously be nonviolent individuals who need support. Perhaps um, someone who needs to be moved from a domestic violence situation um, or some other sort of um, scene where it's, it's not an individual who needs to be taken to jail. So we need the funds for that.
Have you actually looked into, I mean, there is ARPA money available for that kind of thing.
So I will, I will have to dig. I've been having trouble finding funding for vehicles. The grant opportunities that I've seen typically speak to um, everything it seems but a vehicle or but technology. Um, but I will cer- I will be looking for that. If you have something specific in mind, please do send it my way.
Tom, Tom is on the phone, I think. Mr. Hemler, maybe? Is it, is it somebody that's eligible?
Yeah, I mean, the crisis, I mean, the, to, to, to your point, the, the, the crisis intervention, you know, isn't eligible because it's dealing a lot with mental health and, and those kind of things. So ARPA is eligible. Um, um, we can follow up with the city because we're, they're another client of ours as well on, with ARPA funds. Um, so we can talk to them if there's interest on, on their end um, to, 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 to potentially pursue it further.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for that.
And just one other thing. I don't know if it's possible to do a- And just one other thing. I don't know if it's possible to do a, I saw your press releases, uh, you, you know, it's really be great to kind of explain what it is to the community if you could, if you have like a, like a summary of what, you know, we could send out to our residents to know that this is, is exciting developments happening. I always tell people that if, if you don't tell people that something's going on, then it's not really going on.
Oh, absolutely. So we have, I guess what you've seen is the draft of the press release announcing what we have, um, uh, unofficially scheduled, officially unofficially scheduled, uh, for a press conference on Tuesday afternoon. And so we will be, um, this is me putting on my other hat as the Media Relations Manager. Um, I will be doing everything I can, uh, along with, uh, your, uh, media, um, I'm, I'm going to mess up her title, but Pink Howell, uh, your new media coordinator. Uh, she and I will be beating the bushes and making sure that we can, uh, get as much media attention to this as possible. It is the press release, as you saw, and the press conference are, um, announcing two grants. Uh, Hyattsville did receive, uh, funding for two different mental health and wellness, uh, programming grants. And so it will be a joint, um, pre- press conference announcing those two grants, but also the partnerships with Mount Rainier and Brentwood.
Thank you so much. Um, Chesek, Luke?
Thank you so much for coming on board and talking with us. Um, I had the same question Jimmy did about, um, getting a, a press release out to the community, um, and maybe getting a summary of this, um, for us to kind of get out, um, us council members to kind of get out through our channels as well. Um, that would, that would be really helpful. Um, and just on the ARPA funding, you know, there, we have already, just to let you know, as a city, sort of identified this as a potential place where we would want to spend money. Um, we still have the majority of our ARPA funding available for allocation. So, um, this is definitely something that I think the, the, that we, um, the mayor, council members have talked about in the past. So, um, there, there is funding opportunity here. And if you, that, you know, we're just one, Hyattsville's guy, has a lot more ARPA funding than we do. Um, so, um, I'm sure we can all, uh, come together and, and figure out how to, um, uh, stand up an even better, better program. Um, but I understand very well capacity issues when you are just a staff of one. Um, so, um, get that. Um, so we'll have to just keep, keep collaborating. And, um, Adrian, who are you in contact with in the city of Mount Rainier on this project?
Uh, so at this point, it's mainly just, just Chief Alston.
Okay.
We are, so short of getting the, the application out over the summer, um, and then finding out that we received the funds, we're just in the, the early stages of finalizing all of the paperwork, including getting an MOU out to, to your city attorney. Um, so we are still working on that. There was just a meeting last week with the other, with this cohort that I described. So, um, we've, we've barely, uh, really, we've barely gotten started. Um, I, I would like to say one thing I did leave out is that, uh, what, at, at a certain point, we will probably be sending out an RFP to find an agency that will do the close oversight of the practitioners. So while my, my, um, city treasurer will be managing the, the expenses with the money funneling through from the grant. Um, I am not a mental health practitioner. I will not be responsible for making sure that, um, all of those elements HIPAA and, and so forth, um, that are not part of my lane exactly are followed. Um, we will have an agency that is, is managing that.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much, Adrian. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Adrian. And just to point out, um, Mr. Kamali has, um, assigned, uh, chief that task. So Mr. Kamali is also in the loop, uh, when it comes to what's going on. I just want to make sure it's clear that it is direct communication with, um, our, our city manager and the point person, um, is chief, um, assigned through him. Just clarifying.
Um, okay. Uh, Jared, uh, office council member?
Thank you, Adrian, for coming in tonight and, um, speaking and giving us an update. I, uh, you know, Luke and Jimmy covered, I think, everything I was gonna say, but I just wanted to, uh, you know, thank you for an opportunity to, for our cities to collaborate. Um, you know, even though you are bigger, economies of scale are really meaningful of cities of all of our sizes. So, um, thanks for the oppor- thanks for the opportunity, uh, to partner and work together. Um, and, um, yeah, thanks again.
You're welcome. I'm, I'm glad that we can do this. And I must extend, uh, greetings from Chief Jared Towers, who all of you know just joined the police department here in Hyattsville two months ago. He'd had a conflicting seven o'clock Zoom meeting. Otherwise he would have been, um, in his own window on the screen. Uh, but he is very excited that we have, um, this collaboration and he's really eager to have us establish, um, other collaborative efforts, particularly with mental health programming. He's a huge mental health advocate. And so he's excited that we are, uh, launching this in hopes that we can do even more in the future.
Thank you, Adrian. Originally, when, you know, you mentioned it, when you reached out, we made sure we had the meeting. Um, and I thought it was sounding a great idea. It was like basically running against time and everybody came together, fill up the load to make it happen. But it was one of those opportunities that couldn't be bypassed. And we were like, even if we don't make it this time, it gives us a good legwork to do, you know, to do it next time. So when we heard the good news that we got, I mean, it made all of us happy. We work very close to each other. Um, we have cities sharing boundaries or we collaborate with each other. So I think it's, um, sometimes silly for not to collaborate. And that's the reason why we have MOUs with each of the cities. You mentioned both Brentwood, which we shared many cities, many side blocks of the city together. Um, and as well as, um, Hyattsville. But, um, we thank you also to Mr. Kamali, uh, Chief Alston as well for their work. And this, um, is very important. This definitely will add, um, a very needed tool when it comes to our, you know, full-time position that we're trying to move forward to for our social service coordinator, um, as well for our CIT officers. So, overall, like collectively within, within the various tools, we are working, and I, and I say we, you know, because we asked, but, um, Kamali's team is working along with making sure that like, you know, something comes out when it comes to our communication team. So that way residents know the various tools that we have and how we'll continue partner with, um, with the various cities and, and working together in ways to continue emphasizing what community outreach looks like. Making sure we continue emphasizing and like community policing as well. Um, and how they could work hand in hand to make sure that, uh, we are there for our community, uh, when it's needed and when it's not. So hopefully never gets to a point where, where, you know, um, it's a high level where they need to be there, but they work across it so that way it never gets to that point. But, um, thank you so much for your efforts on, on this front, Adrian, and we'll, I'll see you very soon. Okay?
Yes, I'll see you next week. Thank you.
All right, bye.
Good night.
Good night. All right, um, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda. Oh, this is always my favorite one. Reappointment to the Scholarship Committee. So Mayor Council will discuss and vote on the reappointment of the members of the Scholarship Committee. As a feedback, we had discussed, uh, for this, to reappoint the members of the Scholarship Committee that served with us last year. The wonderful news is, um, all five members accepted to be reappointed. Uh, we do have a few of them here. Um, so that's very exciting. So we're working on potentially doing more than a, a two-year term, but at this point until next year to make sure we're not appointing them every single year. So I do have Genesis, uh, JT here as well. Is there any member of the committee here aside from Genesis and JT? So, um, Joe Mary, um, as well as Dave, um, are also part of, um, of the committee as well. So, saying that, can I get you guys, um, to say a few words? Uh, Genesis, this is your third year serving and Genesis was actually a recipient herself, uh, now, now college graduate, um, in the committee and JT joined for the first year, um, as a member of the Scholarship Committee last year. So, um, Genesis, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Benitez. Um, I'm very excited to be back again this year. Uh, the Scholarship Committee means a lot to me, especially because, uh, Mayor Benitez initially reached out to me and like pressed me really hard to get my application done. The first year was open and, um, you know, to any normal person, the scholarship amount could be, you know, they're like, what's this? This is so little. But it actually means a lot to, you know, folks that don't come from much and that amount of money, you know, I was able to buy all of my books for the year, you know, when I got that, uh, scholarship. So I was, that was one less weight off my shoulder. And that's why I love coming back because I also love to hear what other, uh, kids, uh, you know, that were my age, not kids, young adults, were my age at that time or, you know, going through and furthering their careers and their own lives and enriching themselves. I think that's my favorite part about, um, being on this committee. So thank you, Mayor Benitez and everyone, uh, for allowing me to be back, uh, and doing it again this year.
Thank you, Genesis. Um, JT just left the meeting, JT. Uh, but JT has also been very great. She works very close with the community, also when it comes to outreach. Um, part of the beauty of the committee is like also very diverse. Um, the committee application process, um, i- is one that is, if you put the time and effort, you could get, um, the award, but it takes time and dedication from, um, the committee to read, um, all those heartfelt, uh, tear, um, you know, it's hard to read some of those essays. It's like you start realizing the challenges our students have gone through and how much this funding will mean to them. Um, and then when you talk to them, you also realize, you know, that they have a commitment to the city to make sure they rise above and they become, uh, educational, um, role models. And, um, that's the way we make sure that it's guided, um, when it comes to the committee. Like, we are gonna look for you for, you don't model what, um, what is, what a scholarship recipient is to the city. So, Genesis, thank you so much. JT, you were here. You were gonna be next. Um, it's wonderful to join us. Joe Mary, um, Dave, um, as well, and Tony George as well, who's has, um, who's been very, um, they're all very community driven. They put the time and effort. So you'll be seeing information about when the Scholarship Committee becomes active for the application, the question, and what the schedule is. Okay? But now we have a committee in place. Um, do you guys, well, since I only have, uh, Genesis right here, do you guys have any questions for Genesis? I'll start with, uh, with Jared. I'm making sure I'm sounding those double Ts at the end.
It's, 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 it's okay, everyone. Everyone gets it wrong. Um, yeah, Genesis, I ju- uh, just thank you so much. I, I mean, it's great to hear, um, you know, the, the story of someone that's, you know, both, um, benefited from the scholarship program and the opportunity, uh, and then come, come back and, uh, and, and served and, uh, given back. So I just, you know, I want to thank you, um, I mean, first off, for pursuing it initially, but then, um, you know, coming back to the community and, um, you know, spending your time and dedicating yourself, uh, to supporting others that follow, uh, follow after you. So, um, I, no, no major questions. Just again, wanted to thank you for your time, for your service and, uh, your commitment. Um, thanks again.
Thank you, council member.
So, uh, Jimmy and then Luke?
Same thing. Uh, thank you for all your work. We really appreciate it.
Okay, and Luke?
Thanks for all your work. Um, I say this every year, but one of the, the, the best times to be on council is when we get to hand out those, uh, checks to, to students. Um, just a really fun time. So thank you all for, for your work. Appreciate it.
All right, so, so, um, so one thing the, we do need to make sure your word, like, we are working on making sure that each of the class, um, you know, wiki wrecker of them. Cause the idea is in the fifth year, get them all together and having, um, have to meet them. The other way, the other thing is like they become resources to the students, um, both, um, you know, the Scholarship Committee as well as, um, former, uh, scholarship recipients and, and as well as us. I know Luke has like making stuff available as well, um, to be reached out if any of the, any of the scholarship recipients have a question or, or when it comes to education, the school he has gone to, the career that he's chosen to make sure they know that's accessibility. So, I definitely was for Jimmy and Jared as well, um, to make yourself accessible in case. So that way we, um, we continue helping, um, our scholarship recipients. Cause, uh, some of them, we might be, um, the only, um, members that, the only people that they might know that have, um, college graduate experience. Okay? So it's a good feeling stuff. And so I want to attain a motion to reappoint the Scholarship Committee.
So moved?
Second?
It's been properly moved and second. Any objections? Hearing that there is none and the Scholarship Committee has been reappointing, um, and they will serve for the year until we have in, um, our ceremony of award checks. So thank you guys so much. I have a couple of other committees like texting me. But, uh, thank you, thank you so much, um, for being here. And thank you for the time and effort. And, uh, Melissa, uh, will be reaching out as, uh, your liaison for the Scholarship, um, Committee. So thank you, guys. So got one of them that said like, we're hearing, we're listening. All right, perfect. Thank you. All right. So now we move on to item number 10. Adoption of the Proposed Budget Calendar for Fiscal Year 2023 Budget. We will vote on the adoption of the Proposed Budget Calendar for Fiscal Year 2023. This, uh, proposed budget schedule was, um, introduced to us on the last work session. So council, you guys, uh, were able to take a nice look at it. There is the resolution 07/2021. Okay, so can you pre-scroll, um, to the dates?
Can you make it a little larger? Some of us are old and can't read. Perfect. I'd like to move to the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor?
Second?
Which is properly second. Any discussion? Hearing that there is none, um, I'll call for the vote. Any objection? Hearing that there's none, Resolution 0 dash 2021, uh, passes unanimously. So, uh, Mr. Kamali, um, please, um, add all this wonderful days to our, uh, communal calendar. And we look forward to, uh, enjoy the, the, the budget season. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, the next item, item number 11, letter support for the draft, um, for the Climate Change Plan. We had a presentation in the last work session. The letter, uh, was presented then and, um, council was, uh, asked if they needed to add anything or there was any feedback to please, um, send a message to let us know. A big, uh, thank you to, uh, Mary Aide and Sarah, as well as Joseph, um, members of our Green Team and also, um, pre-commission and also on the climate change, uh, program, uh, program plan, uh, for being here and helping us, uh, with this letter. Do you have the letter right there, Melissa? Thank you, Melissa. So this is a letter of support and it's addressed to, um, councilman, uh, to County Council Member and Chair, um, Hawkins, Vice Chair, uh, Danny Tavares and Council Member Franklin as our, um, liaisons. But I definitely, I'm gonna add, uh, the rest of the council on it. So that would are where we stand. Says the SAVI of Mount Rainier is fully supporter of the Prince George's County Leading a Climate, um, Action. Works the County Council to swiftly adopt the Draft Climate Change Action Plan and begin implementations of the measures that have been outlined in the 26 Priority Recommendations. The climate crisis is existential threat and the Prince George's County must take immediate steps to protect our county against the effects of climate change impacts on our buil- on our bill. Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm just as blind as, as. of climate change impacts on our bill on our bill. Oh yeah, I'm I'm just as blind as you, Jimmy. Um on our bill socio-economic and nat- and natural system. Recent scientific uh reports indicate that action must be taken now to have an impact. The future of our communities depend upon aggressive reduction of greenhouse gas resilience and implementing equitable climate solutions to protect our most vulnerable populations. The county must prioritize climate-friendly measures and policies and backup its commitments with adequate funding and staffing. There can now be no half-measures when it comes to equitable climate change outcomes for all county residents. The city of Mariner represents over eight thousand county residents who will benefit and whose children, grandchildren will benefit from the climate action plan's implementation. Climate protections measures are not only about sustaining our environment, but our economy, our health and our community as well. Climate leadership is vital to ensuring that all of our communities remain a desirable place to live, work and play. Um our town is already taking active measures to address the climate issues, looks forward to partnering with the county to broaden support for the plan. According to local efforts and share best practice, some actions our community have taken already include adopting a resolution calling fossil fuel use to phase out of the municipal operations. Conducting a municipal carbon footprint analysis with assistance from the University of Maryland, purchase electrical vehicle for use for code enforcement staff. Replace city-owned city strass and many indoor lights and city buildings with high efficient inlets. Install solar panels on our city hall and conduct events in the community to promote solar energy among residents and business. Sign a contract to purchase our renewable energy from municipal operation, adopt a green infrastructure plan for the city in order to begin planning. Then increase resilience against flooding and adopt bicycle master plan from the city in order to increase active transportation decreasing single occupancy vehicle use. However, as much as we have done, we continue to do in our community. We need the county to take a bold action too. Building coast transportation network, uh grow smart, electrical vehicle charging network, among others. Would not be successful without the county climate action plan being implemented. The health, safety and economical well-being of the community is at risk. Thank you for recognizing the need to take bold actions to address the most urgent issues of our lifetime. We stand to assist you as others, as as together we forge a new path to climate change, a climate-friendly future. Sincerely. There there we are, okay? Alright, so I read the whole entire letter. Any uh discussion on this matter? If not, um you guys could call for a vote. So um I am sorry, I have to move back and forth. So I have uh Jared.
Um no comments. You know, this is something I dedicate my professional life and career to and I could be more thrilled that we're uh the county has done this and that we're signing on in support.
Perfect. Thank you, Jimmy.
I do, same thing.
It's like you had the mic open and ready. I thought you had a whole speech. Alright, Luke?
Let's get it out. Thanks.
And there's anything else you see we need to add or does does it's gonna go out tomorrow morning, okay?
It's good.
Alright, perfect. Thank you. Anybody from the community on the chat boxes? Or if they're here, if you're here and you have something to say. Okay, um hello, Ms. Tony George. It's a pleasure to have you here. Um okay, nothing from Facebook? Okay, so perfect. So I'd like to put a motion on the floor to adopt the letter um in support of the climate change plan for the county.
I moved.
Second.
Is re-properly moved and second. Um any discussion? Any objections? Hearing that there is none, this letter um this letter has been approved unanimously. Okay, moving on to the next item. ARPA dis- uh ARPA discussion and vote. Um please make sure we edit that one. And the description that says mayor and council will discuss and vote, okay? Alright, the mayor and council will discuss and vote on a full-time appointment of social worker. We currently have um a halftime position on to Richardson Park and number three, uh the vaccine um incentive initiative. I will open up the floor uh to um to actually to Mr. Kamali. Uh do you have any updates on any of this information from uh council? For council, mayor council. Go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
Uh yes, mayor. Uh regarding the social worker, so you guys asked me to provide the number for the full salary as she becomes a full employment employee. So we're looking at fifty-seven thousand and eight hundred forty-four dollars plus twenty-two thousand dollars for the benefits. So we're talking about eighty thousand dollars overall. Which half of this is is right now provided by the police department. So we were hoping, however, the mayor and council want to decide to have half of it from the ARPA fund, I believe. So this is regarding social worker. R- regarding Richardson Park, I have sent information to mayor and to council member Chesek. Overall, we need hundred fifty thousand dollars for the new equipments and the fencing around the park. And the last one, I believe that it was ten thousand dollars that allocated last time. I don't have anything regarding the last one. So if there is any question for me, I'll be glad to respond. The only thing, the last one that we have to make sure, I have Tom over here that could, you know, give you some information, how to manage the incentives. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. I also wanna, and I was gonna point that next, uh Thomas Himler, um our consultant for the ARPA funds is also here. Um before before, how do you call it? Um we had a bunch of questions. I want to make sure at least we had the the neutral grounding. Uh Luke, I see your mic open. Well, I see everybody's, almost everybody's mic open. Go ahead.
No, this tracks um the cost estimates we had last time we spoke, so um it would just be forty thousand for the social worker, ten thousand for the vaccine incentives and a hundred and fifty thousand for Richardson Park. Um and so that should track the the project plan update that I sent to everybody yesterday. Um as far as how much money we've we've allocated thus far.
Thank you so much, uh Luke. Uh Jimmy, followed by Jared?
Uh no, that's fine. Uh I was just going to do one at a time, but uh we can do it all together. Uh so it's forty thousand for the social worker, uh Richardson Park and just do a brief description of what we're doing there and where is Richardson Park for some of us.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Go ahead.
Yes, Richardson Park is located on thirty-first at the end of the thirty-first and and around the road. This is the only park the city has with the playground equipment. And a lot of people are using our park and that's the only park that we have. Most of the equipments are broken apart. So what we're trying to do, we have a proposal for replacing all the equip- all the equipments. Plus, if you recall last time, some of the community uh were asking to put some fencing in order for the kids to be protected. So we're gonna do the fencing and the ramp for the ADA compliant and make sure that all the equipments are up to date. And from the safety point of view, they are not really even good for the kids to be used right now.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Jimmy, does that answer your question?
Yeah, is that that's next to the community garden?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And the third thing was the vaccine incentives. Uh I I just want to make sure we're not uh we uh duplicating what other people are doing. So what what does that involve?
I'll give you that answer. Um we're definitely not duplicating it. So a perfect example to be an observation is uh this weekend, as Brentwood, Norbrenwood um in common manner came together. They were giving incentives to community members that attended the vaccination clinics. And that could be in a way of like either gift cards or tickets to like, you know, um uh be able to get items uh our um local businesses and stuff like that, right? But it's a way to incentivize people not to just get the first vaccine, but also come for the second or the third. It's a way of giving promotional um promotional material, information um as well. And it has been used at a state level when the state did um the equivalent of the lottery ticket for like college students and also the community. It has been used um in a way for the county. When they had um, you know, the big event to kick off um the five-year-old plus um the five-year-old plus of being able to vaccinate it, they had um balloons and face painting and stuff like that to try to draw more people to um to the location. Um and like I said, the the latest one has also been like the neighboring cities um as well that have done this. We're actually coming on two uh clinics that are gonna be host in the city. Uh December sixteen and December twenty-second, the schools are gonna have uh clinics. Uh so um part of this funding, if we could ask even some of it, right, to start working with that. Partnering with the schools so that we offer some incentives in order for um to draw even more people to go to the vaccination sites. Um as you guys are aware, our city is actually um about number seven. Um top seven when it comes to people not being vaccinated. So we need to start thinking as outside the box to incentivize people to go to the vaccine locations. Um and as many vaccines clinics as we what we have done. We need to continue doing even more to make sure we reach to um to as many people as possible. So that is basically the incentive. You do take notes of how many people are coming, you know, and um and that they're getting the vaccine. They provide you a name, you give them a a ticket. That's basically how the other three cities did them. Uh they found it uh very rewarding and um it gives people like um making sure you drive them through the cities and the census are not gonna, they're not very big, you know, what they did is like, so it's a combination, like, you know. But that's something that the city could uh through Mr. um Kamali's leadership, right, and then with partnership of the other um either the county or the schools. Uh we could work with them to make sure that we provide that when the clinics are in our city for our residents.
Uh sounds good. Just let let's track uh how many people so we can, you know, tell people what we, you know, what we're doing. It sounds great.
Thank you, Jimmy. Um Luke, I ask you about something else. Would you wanna comment on on anything this?
No, I'm I'm good with all these things. Um I know at our December work session, we'll go back to the big list. Um uh we have an updated price proposal for Memorial Park that's uh a lot more than, you know, what we've allocated from the grant funding that we have already from DHCD and ATHA. Um so there's there's gonna be a lot more for that project potentially. Um so just flagging that and I'll forward the cost proposal to everybody. So y'all can see it before the December work session. That and the green roof are the only two other big projects um for an upper discussion there at the December work session. Um but we still have the 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 majority of our funding unallocated for, even after assuming these get um funded, we should still have three point nine million remaining unallocated. So um um so I'm I'm good with these and and then we can go back to the drawing board and at the December work session.
Yeah, just one point of information that we had discussed it and um it's gonna be presented for the next uh work session. It's also when it comes to the, I guess it couldn't be like hazardous pay for our staff. Uh that's something we also need to take into account as we discuss the ARPA funding. So um I am working um with Mr. Kamali on a on a proposal, right, so that way we could turn it in because um the ARPA funds, uh Thomas, correct me if I'm if I'm wrong, but uh could be utilized for hazardous paid or um differential pay when it comes to our our staff members.
Right, premium pay is 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 an eligible use for, you know, um specific people or just people who perform specific tasks. So we'll work with Mr. Kamali on identifying who those are, but there are certain eligibility requirements that that individuals have to ma- have to meet um as as essential employees. And then if we can, if we can just add real quickly to the vaccine piece, the one thing, we can work with Mr. Kamali. It would be helpful for the city to at least um settle on and have specific guidelines as to what, how you're gonna implement it, so that if treasury comes back three, four years from now and say, well, how did you implement the program? We we can point them to, here's how, here's the parameters, whether it was only for unvaccinated residents or partially vaccinated or fully vaccinated, ever how the city's gonna implement the incentive. It would be good to have some basic program guidelines established through the city manager's office that at least lays those things out. So when you do these events that it's that it's that it's clear as Mr. Tarler said, you know, because at the end of days, you're gonna have to document who who and why got these benefits, right? Um and then also to what form the gift or benefit will entail. Um the city's already had a bad experience with one form of gift card, so we would uh we'll work with Mr. Kamali if that's the route you're gonna go to to do it a different way. Um because the previous one seems to be some gaps in how it was done.
Correct. Uh yeah, so no, definitely like even if with the approval of the funds uh tonight. We have like left work to do on the administrative side. Uh that goes for like a lot of even the funding that we are um we have approved. Okay, but yeah.
Thank you.
All accounted for. Thank you, Thomas. Mr. Kamali, anything else to um add or do, did I cover you?
No, I appreciate that. I just wanna say thank you to LID, Mr. Neil Weinstein is here too tonight. So if there is any question regarding those ARPA project, Luke, please, if there is anything that we can have him answer those questions. Otherwise, I appreciate mayor and council for the opportunity.
Are we making any progress? I'm sorry.
Hold on, wait. So thank you, Neil, for being here and for all your time and effort. I know me and Luke uh met with you as well in various projects, so we look forward to some.
Great, thanks.
Jimmy?
Just have we made any progress about hiring a a manager? I know we approved the funding for that. With some of the projects, uh third-party projects, I think we depended on hiring a manager for.
Can I answer that question here?
That's to you, man.
Go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
Uh alright, thank you, Jimmy. Yes, we have posted the job description and we have up to eight candidates. Unfortunately, I have reviewed all the resumes and they're not really qualified. So we have to extend the uh job opportunity until we find somebody. And I'm looking all over. I'm even asking Tom, Neil, LID, everybody if they could, you know, refer me to anybody that, you know, as a project manager, but unfortunately, not yet. We wanna make sure somebody that, we wanna bring it on board to make sure that the, you know, that person is capable and have enough knowledge to be working with me and Tom at the same time. So hopefully, we're gonna have somebody. I just need more time on that.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Um Jared, uh Luke, since we go, we're going to the next round?
Yeah, no, just um uh you know, fully on board with um the appointment of the social worker. That's I think a really important uh thing to really be able to center our um residents on Richardson Park again. Um hundred percent on board with that is our only, the one park that we have that we can um because it's not MNC PPC, we can directly take action on and I think those um usability, uh safety and accessibility improvements are really critical. And then lastly, on the vaccine, um yeah, just wanna echo obviously what Jimmy said. Um and what Tom said about uh, you know, tracking and also just making sure that we stay within compliance. But I, you know, I agree, it's uh, you know, we we we're almost you know, we've kind of hit a plateau in terms of vaccinations. Um improving that rate is something that'll improve safety for everyone and um, you know, the the ability of some incentives, however small, to help help move the needle on that is gonna be really helpful. And uh thanks again, Mr. Kamali. Just wanted to comment on the update on the manager. Um you know, a lot of, a lot of municipalities, a lot of cities, a lot of organizations are doing the same thing right now. So I know it's probably more challenging than it would have been in another time to find someone for this role. Um and definitely understand that you're, you know, understand the challenge uh and and definitely want you to find the right person, you know, the person immediately. So thank you for your dedication and focus on this.
Thank you, Jared. Luke?
Nothing more. Thanks.
Nothing more, Luke? You sure?
Well, I mean, I think on tonight's agenda was just to vote on these three issues. So the more I'll have to talk about will be at the December work session.
Yeah, correct. I think that's what we'll get an update and figure out what else we're moving to January or sooner, if that's what you guys choose to. Okay, so council, you guys have an excellent discussion. You've heard from your city manager, from your ARPA consultant. Is, so option, so I was going to say, it seems like we're all in agreement, all three of them. So we could vote in a block if you want to.
I just moved that we vote to approve the money for all three projects.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing that there's no discussion, I will ask, is there any objection on approving all three items together? Okay, there is no objection on voting on three together. So Jimmy, can you put the motion on the floor? What is specific that three items are?
I don't have it on my agenda, but let me just see if it's on the agenda there. Okay, that we moved to appropriate, I don't have the amount. Was it $40,000 for the social worker? What was the amount for the Richardson Park?
$150,000.
I heard 100 or 150?
150.
150,000 for Richardson Park, and I think I heard $10,000 for vaccine incentives.
Correct.
Correct, Mayor.
Correct, Jimmy.
So altogether, it's $200,000 for those three projects.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. Any second to that one?
It's going to be high, guys.
Jared, second that one?
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Because you guys moved to vote with them, all three together. You guys didn't vote to vote on them themselves. So it's two different motions.
It's been moved to the seconded.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Here, there's some discussion. I will move to ask, is there any objections or abstentions on this item? Seeing that there is none, this item has passed. Thank you guys so much. And Luke, you're going to update the document to reflect that this money has been allocated, correct?
Yep, I'll do that right now.
I know. You're such a good program manager, Luke. Are you sure you're not looking for a job where you know nobody that's looking for one?
I'm fine.
Okay, let me see. Next item on the agenda. Charter Amendment Section 5.1 and 3, vacancy in office. Let's make sure we have vacancy in office. Hold on one second. The mayor and council will have the second reading and vote on the proposed charter change of special elections when there is a council member vacancy. So just ask council member, because council sounds like the mayor and the mayor has like a different, a whole different rules when it comes to special elections. That's already like. Yeah, just in the bottom, it's fine. Go ahead, Jimmy. The floor is yours.
No, Mayor, we're going to adopt the minutes before that, that's why.
Oh, I am so sorry. Okay, so number 13, adoption of the minutes for September 21st, 2021 work session, October 19th, 2021 work session, and November 2nd, 2021 legislative meeting. Melissa, am I correct in saying that all of this were the ones presented at the work session?
Yes, two were presented at the last work session and one at the legislative session.
Okay, so you have had time, space to see this minute, review this minute, submit edits of this minute. So these are not new minutes. Okay, thank you so much, Melissa. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the minutes for September 21st, October 19th, and November 2nd meetings?
Moved.
Second, by who? Move by Jimmy Tarlo?
Seconded by me, then.
Second by Jared Stolpes. Okay, any discussion? Hearing that there's none, any objection or any problem with them? Okay, hearing that there's none, the adoption of this menace have a pass unanimously. Melissa, they're all approved, Melissa. Thank you for, thank you, Mr. Kamali, Melissa, for making sure you guys are like on point with the menace. I think this has been the best turnaround in minutes I've had in like four years of, of being, four or five years I've been in council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Give me one second. All right. Okay, so I will answer your question, Tony, in a second. So I would like to move to item number 14. Charter Amendment Section 513, vacancies in office. Mayor and council will discuss, will have a second reading. Oh, I'm so sorry, guys. This thing is moving. Second, there you go. On a proposed charter change on special election where there is a council and member vacancy. Jimmy, the floor is yours.
I mean, this has been discussed at a couple of different meetings. I am trying to look to see, out of Melissa, you have it, the actual change. Here it is. Basically, it says briefly that if there's a vacancy that occurs for council, the mayor has, as mayor has already said, has already stated, if there's a vacancy that's more than one year before the next general election, the vacancy shall be filled by special election. If it occurs less than one year before the general election, we'll continue the same procedure where the other councilperson in the ward will recommend up to three people. That's it. Out of any questions, I mean, we've had, good, you brought it up. That's basically the motion. We had a first reading in the October meeting, in November meeting, we held it up, and now this is the second meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. I'll open it up for discussion. Councilmember Stolpes, this is, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, sorry. I mean, no additional discussion. This is something we've, you know, as Jimmy mentioned, talked over a number of times. And, you know, I appreciate the council and mayor for, you know, bringing this forward. And Jimmy for bringing this forward. I think it is, you know, an important thing to be able to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Jared. Luke?
I appreciate the movement on this bill. Getting it to one year is the sort of breaking point where if it's less than that, you have point. And more than that, you have a special election. So I appreciate that movement, Jimmy, from you and look forward to making this law. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. I mean, you presented it, but I wanted to know if you have anything else to add.
No, I don't have anything else to add. I just like to, you know, move on to other things.
What? You don't want to see this in every meeting? Okay, so we've had a discussion. Anything on the chat or on the, or on Facebook? I need to go grab water. I'm losing my voice already. Okay, perfect. There is, Melissa, can you go back to the agenda, please? Thank you. So you guys have heard discussion over and over on this. And at this point, if the Board of Elections hasn't made any comment, that to me also means like they don't have any objections or any feedback to give because I know we definitely have tried, Jimmy, the city, all of us. So I would say that, you know, is there a motion on the floor?
Moved.
Seconded.
It's been properly moved by Councilmember Tarlo, second by Jared. Jared Stolpes, Councilmember Stolpes. Any discussion? Any objection or abstentions? Hearing that there's none, this charter amendment passes. Mr. Kamali, for the, for the next steps, we need to find funding to run this special election. So we're going to need a budget, a budget amendment.
Yes.
Council, start looking at the calendars to figure out if we could throw some days out when we could have this election. And there is, there is language of how close or how far we need to do it. And also, Jimmy, I know you shared a document that said that we needed to post like charter amendments for 40 days?
I'd like to suggest that the city manager talk to our attorney and just to make sure kind of technically how many days. I don't think we can do this for 40 days and, you know, how we, you know, given the new, the new environment where we don't, I mean, we probably have to change the charter at some point. How we do it to make sure, you know, we do what has to be done in terms of charter changes. So I would suggest, I think there's a 40-day period where it has to stay before we actually, actually move on this.
Yeah. No, that's what I was asking regarding the document, but the next, that's part of the next test for Mr. Kamali and his team. You know, when it comes to 40 days, I wasn't sure if it's 40 days, it needs to be posted. And if that's the case, we need to find out what the price is going to be for this to be posted and published in a newspaper. I think that's what the document you said, said. But I might be mistaken on that. So I was just asking confirmation for you if that's what it said. But if that's the case, we're definitely going to have to look for, Mr. Kamali's next step would be to look for funding for the elections or the posting and definitely talking to our city attorney to make sure we're in compliance and what else is needed to make this happen. And also recommend to us what it looks like when it comes to agenda. And that's where we definitely need to make sure that the Board of Elections gets involved. I think, you know, so that way we could get the day, I'll base it in the time they need. They said in the time they need to like get an election moving, but I believe the charter states like there is a minimum time that we need to establish and it might be at least 30 days because even as selected officials, we have 30 days before, before the election to submit documents. So we have to figure that out. So Mr. Kamali, you know, you and your team could work on all of that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali.
And thank you, Mayor, for kind of wanting to come to an agreement on this.
No, I'm fine. I just wanted to make sure we gave enough notice so that we, nobody could say we did not try. We tried, you know, so that's as much as we can do. Thank you, Jimmy. So moving on to our new businesses, mandatory vaccination policy for city employees. The mayor and council will discuss and vote on a mandatory vaccination policy for city employees. Can you put the document on the screen, Melissa, please? Okay. So I will utilize the very, the very powerful vice mayor voice. I need to get water. If you could read that resolution, Jimmy, please. I'm all like.
Can we read the thereas?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically a resolution for the city of Mount Rainier adopting a mandatory vaccination policy for city employees. So make sure we cover. Melissa, can you move it up, please?
There are lots of whereasses. Okay, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Mount Rainier, the vaccination policy for city employees attached here to as Exhibit A. So I guess we have to look at Exhibit A. I haven't seen this document, so I'm sure it's. And maybe the city manager or someone could summarize what this is as opposed to read the whole thing.
This is where I get to read the document, Jimmy.
Mayor, this, the item was in there, this item was not, the attachment.
Okay, so how about this? We'll do a combination of both. Mr. Kamali, can you give us a rundown of what this is? And then we might read a couple of clarity to make sure we are fully aware of what we're asking, we're directing our team to do and why it's in a resolution as well. Thank you, Mr. Kamali. The floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we reached out to the city attorney because we have some employees that are not vaccinated, unfortunately. So and once we talked to the city attorney and to make sure that we could provide some deadline for employees and also we're trying to protect our workforce and workplace. So she, she recommended this document and we reviewed with HR. So we're asking our employee to be vaccinated by January 1st. And otherwise, we have to ask whoever is not in compliance, they need to provide a weekly test on their own expenses. So this document will be effective by January 1st, 2022 if mayor and council approve the resolution and the resolution also was drafted and the document by the city attorney and it's been reviewed by me and the HR.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. So if you guys, is there any questions about this document from Mr. Kamali, councilmembers? Let me see, who do I see? Luke?
Yeah, I just, this is the first time I'm seeing this. And is this, is the, Mr. Kamali, is this your, is this sort of something that you came up with and you thought we'd need as a city? Is that where this is coming from?
Well, actually, we're following the same, the same protocol from, the PG County is doing the same thing.
Okay.
So in order to stay compliant with the PG and county, we look into their mandate. And I talked to the city attorney and I have also consulted with the mayor too. So we want to make sure to protect our employees. And unfortunately, every day we have a new variant and we want to make sure that the city hall is a very small space and we are, you know, interacting very closely with each other. So we decided to reach out to the city attorney and to make sure that we can cover everybody and protect everybody.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's my question.
So just a point of like information to remind all of us, this was something, the bigger, there was a big, huge document that was sent to us by the city attorney a bit ago. So this is like the shorter version of that document that was submitted to us like quite a bit ago. Because it was a very hefty document. All right, Jared and Jimmy?
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Kamali, just to follow up on Luke's questions. So just so I understand this, the, there is a vaccination requirement. There's a reasonable accommodation for the reasons listed. If folks, to be, if folks don't get vaccinated, they do have an alternative, which is weekly testing at their own.
Exactly.
Okay. Got it. And you said something about being in compliance with the county. Was that like pulling this city's policies in line with what the county is doing?
Well, basically. Well, basically.
Is there a county where, yeah. Sorry, go on.
No, I just want to make sure that because uh since, you know, we are a part of PG County, and we want to make sure that we follow the same guideline from the PG County, and when I consulted with the city attorney, she was on the same page with me, and uh I believe, you know, we're just trying to protect our workforce and workplace. That's the whole idea behind this. And uh, as you know, even last week, we had a new variant, and uh some people are have reached out to me, employees, and, you know, they have some, you know, concerns that the colleagues are not vaccinated. So somehow, we have to come to some point and ask them either to go and get the vaccination or they have to provide a weekly testing. Maybe by going through this process, we can have everybody to be at least, you know, vaccinated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kamali. Jared, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, um. Okay, so yeah, I I, okay, so it it was aligning our policies with what the county's guidelines are, and what the county is doing for the county employees as well. Is that true?
Exactly, yes.
And probably some other area municipalities as well?
I believe so.
Okay. Um, you know, and I I want to be clear, I'm I'm a very big supporter of vaccination. I had the opportunity, um, I took the first opportunity I, when I was eligible, and I think it's really important um from a health and safety perspective. Um, do you, do you think this policy avoids um, you know, I guess with the masking and testing or the vaccination requirement, or the vaccination requirement, um, I guess, do you, do you think this policy handles uh any, any concerns about um uh, well, I I guess, to be frank, attrition if um, you know, there's not agreement on these policies? That's a hard question, so.
I know, but my hope is by implementing this policy, the rest of the city employees would go and get, you know, the vaccination, and at least, you know, at some point next year at this time, we can at least, you know, feel safer than where we are right now.
Yeah, no, and I, and I, you know, this is a challenging issue to navigate. Um, I think the fact that you've created created two pathways here, one that is a vaccination requirement and one that is, you know, a masking and testing requirement, I I think, you know, I I think would address the predominant concerns um that I would have. Um, you know, this is, this is challenging to navigate for a lot of folks, a lot of employers. Um, and I I think one thing that is additionally helpful is, you know, we're it's hard to do this in a vacuum. It's helpful that other cities are doing it. It's helpful the county is doing it. Uh, and it is helpful, the federal government has issued guidance, um, you know, that is percolating its way down, perhaps um, someone else might be able to speak to that about um vaccination um requirements um and policies. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Uh, and just to point out, yeah, there are various municipalities um that have uh this requirement. We're definitely not the first one. There's some of them that had it as early as the beginning of the year. We're actually like um, maybe the middle of the pack, but yeah, some some of them started very early um on that they have uh even moved on to um vaccination um completely. So this felt like it was a good path to go through it, and also the statistics in our city want to make sure that everybody is um, at least for my five cents, right? That everybody's protected, um, because if our numbers are so high and we have a lot of our employees out, they they um, they they, you know, they're at risk if if they're not protected. Anyways, um, Jimmy Tarlo. You spoke so much in the other item, I almost forgot, Jimmy.
No, no, just uh saying what you said, sounds very reasonable. A lot of places are doing uh mandatory vaccines. This is, you know, less than that, so I'm completely in support.
Thank you, and uh thank you, Mr. Kamali. Uh, it was my my understanding, Mr. Kamali, correct me if I'm wrong. The reason why it's here in front of us is because our city lawyer uh recommended that this had to be passed to the mayor and council, and that's the reason this uh resolution is here, correct?
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, because you know, like, Mr. Kamali is the boss of everybody. He's the top chief, and they're all their employees, but the city manager recommended to, for him to make sure this route happened, and in that way, um, and Mr. Kamali um followed uh legal advice. All right, so um, can I move it to the front of the page, Melissa, please? Hey, Mr. Kamali, thank you for making sure that um legal and HR and your office were working together to make sure um, you know, um, all the information was covered.
I guess, can I move the uh, the policy? Is that a, is it, I think?
It is. That's what I was looking for, the top of the document. Can you lower it down, Melissa, so we can know exactly what it is, so that way it'll be easier for us to make it into a motion? Um, the heading of the document, Melissa. Thank you, Melissa.
I like to move the resolution.
Right there. Um, you like to move Resolution zero eight twenty-one? Correct?
Oh, wait, two oh two one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Resolution zero eight twenty-one um has been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Luke. Um, any objections or abstentions? Hearing that there is none objections or extensions, um, this item has been moved. So Resolution zero eight twenty-one has been uh passed unanimously. Uh, thank you so much. So we um document task, Mr. Kamali, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, perfect. Um, presentation of the November sixteen, twenty twenty-one work session minute. I feel like Melissa gave us homework every time she she puts the minutes up, right? Uh, the mayor, uh mayor and city council received the work session uh for November sixteen, twenty twenty-one minutes from the city clerk. So Melissa, they're attached to the package, right? So um, please submit any um edits uh to Melissa um before the end of Friday's business day. In agreement, council?
Yes.
Let me throw, okay, Melissa, so they'll they'll be emailing you in case they have any edits, any edits. And if you don't hear from any of us, it's, you know, put them on on the next agenda for vote, okay? All right, and last but not least, I will read just the upcoming events and then we'll adjourn, okay? Uh, holiday baskets is December seventeen, picture with Santa December eighteen. Santa will be driving through the city of Monreynia, uh, the fire department um truck accompanied by our very own Monreynia Police Department on December nineteen. So look out for those all exciting um holiday um events. So I will move uh to item number seventeen, adjournment. Do you have a motion? Council, motion to adjourn?
Mayor, one thing real quick.
Go ahead.
Sorry, um, just to, I was, I was redoing the ARPA plan and gonna send it to you guys. Um, you, just to let you know, you you all had, or we all had, um, uh, okay, the stormwater fixes at Thirty Third and Perry. The that price is now incorporated into the Memorial Park coal thirty-three hundred block streetscape, so I'm gonna try to make that clear. So it may, it may look like, I'm gonna do the calculations now, but it may be we may have more funding available, but but in that and and the cost of the Thirty Third and Perry project will just be a part of the Memorial Park project. I'll try to explain it in the I just sent you the Memorial Park cost proposal, and I'm gonna um, but I'll update that project plan, so you guys can all take a look at that, and we can talk more about it at the December work session. Just so if you see the numbers there, we may actually have more money available because things have been moved around a little bit, but I'll, I can explain that more if you want to talk offline.
Thank, I was like, nobody said nothing about a German. Thank you, Luke, so much for keeping us on track of the program management. I was like, just add one more item, Luke. Okay, so. I know, this is what happens for me finishing early. You're like, too early. Okay, so item number seventeen, adjournment of this meeting. Do you have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved, second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any objections or extensions? Um, hearing that there is none, this meeting is officially closed at nine fifteen P M. Thank you, staff, uh councilmember, Mr. Kamali, and all of our guests. And once again, congratulations to the Northwestern Soccer uh Championship Team. All right, have a good night, everyone, and I'll see you um.
Two weeks.
See you soon. Hopefully sooner than that. Okay, have a good night, bye.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night. Have a good night.